All right. Good evening. It is 7:07 and I will call back into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on September the 18th, 2025. We're going to begin tonight with our pledges led by Anderson Elementary student Jason Manundar.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Please join us at this time for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Communications Officer, Tyena Northington, to tell us a bit more about our student tonight.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. Tonight, we were graced with Jason Manundar who joined us. He's a sixth grader at Anderson Elementary School. He has his teacher joining us, Ms. White, and also his principal right behind him right there. Give a nice proud wave. Jason, let me tell you, he was so excited to tell me that he first joined Arlington ISD in first grade. And he goes, and that year was on Zoom, but I came into the school in second grade. And that just shows that the connections he made with his teachers at that year really spoke to him. And he knew that he was right there at Anderson Elementary School. So we're so glad that he was there. His favorite subject is math. He uses it not only to pass the time, but also to make sure that he's really good in all the things he does. He is someone who aspires to be a surgeon growing up. And so he knows that he's got to be really laser focused when it comes to all of his math studies. He said that his favorite teacher so far was actually Ms. Newton, who he had the pleasure of meeting when he was just very young and entering our district. On the side, besides playing with friends, video games, I've heard a few times, he did say that he likes recess and to do physical activity when possible within his school. So I know that we'll be excited to share all of the items that you achieved throughout your years in Arlington. We look forward to sharing them and having you again right here in the board meeting. Maybe we'll be highlighting you as our student of the month in the coming years, Jason. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason and Tyena. With no registered speakers for appointments tonight, we're going to proceed to the ratification of administrative appointments. Tonight, we have two up, Assistant Principals of Arlington High School and Mary Moore Elementary. Do I have a motion to ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session?
Motion.
Have a motion for Ms. Fowler? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Ms. Richardson. Trustees will proceed to vote. All trustees present voted in affirmative. The motion carries. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, thank you for that. We are excited to welcome two new people into new roles in Arlington ISD, but they might not be new to Arlington ISD overall. First, I'd like to welcome our new Arlington High School Assistant Principal, Brandon Howard. Brandon, come on up. So Brandon holds a Master's of Education in Educational Leadership from the University of Texas at Arlington and a Bachelor of Science from McMurray University. With over 20 years in Arlington ISD, he has served as a teacher, coach, and administrator at the elementary, junior high, and high school levels. Most recently, he has spent nearly a decade as an assistant principal at Lamar High School, demonstrating strong leadership in secondary education. Congratulations, Brandon.
Thank you. President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you very much for this opportunity to make a transition to Arlington High as an assistant principal. And I'd like to start tonight off by recognizing my family who's here tonight. My beautiful wife, Margie Howard, is here. And my youngest son, Gannon Howard, is also here. I have two other sons, Preston and Barrett, who are off doing college things. They couldn't make it tonight. I feel like I've had an opportunity here in Arlington to work with some tremendous principals throughout my 25 years, I believe. I would like to thank Jimmy Walker, Tiffany Benavides, Tiffany Jackson, Rennie Lizardo, Andy Hagman, and Leslie Maroni for their leadership at the various campuses that I've been out throughout my years. To my new cult family, I can't put into words how excited I am to become an AP at Arlington High and to join the work that you do every day impacting kids and making sure they receive more than just an education. From my first year at Bailey Junior High, working with the Arlington High coaches, I could envision myself being, working at Arlington High in some fashion. And standing here tonight, it's a fulfillment of that vision that I had all those years ago. I've experienced what it means to be a member of the cult family as a parent. And now I'm super, super excited to experience what it means to be a member of the cult family as a member of the Arlington High School administration team. Thank you. God bless and kick 'em.
And I would also like to welcome our new Assistant Principal at Mary Moore Elementary, Lizette Gonzalez. Lizette, come on up. Lizette holds a Master's Degree in Educational Administration from the University of North Texas and a Bachelor's Degree from SMU. She brings over a decade of leadership experience across elementary, junior high, and high school levels, including assistant principal roles in Arlington and Mansfield ISDs. Currently serving as an elementary instructional coach, she has also contributed expertise in human resources and instructional leadership. Congratulations, Lizette.
Thank you so much. I'd first like to start off by thanking my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for always guiding my steps and I hope to always fulfill my purpose as a servant leader. President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to once again be a part of the administrative team here in Arlington. My family is deeply rooted in this wonderful district. And with me tonight, I have my three boys sitting way back there, Moses Gonzalez, Miguel Gonzalez, and Misael Gonzalez. And I have my wonderful stepdaughter, who's also been through Arlington ISD, actually graduated from Arlington High. And she is, it's her birthday week, so this is one of her birthday presents. She couldn't be here tonight. She's working. My husband as well, hard worker, but I know he's watching. So also, for my role here as Assistant Principal at Moore, I'm just so humbled and so excited and ready to learn and to serve with you all. I'd like to acknowledge my current team over at Bergen. Thank you so much for embracing the whole me and allowing me to serve in the capacity that has refocused my leadership path. The leadership team and our fearless leader over at Bergen, Karen Tufts, you are beyond special to me, and I will always be grateful for that our paths crossed once again. And it was just a perfect time when it did. I will miss you all. To my husband and children, thank you for being my driving force behind every decision that I make. Thank you for always supporting me and encouraging me to continue. I love you all deeply. And to my educational leaders that have been with me and have had the privilege to learn from, each one of them is a unique piece of my puzzle, and I treasure the knowledge that each one has shared with me. And finally, to my new school family at Moore, I am both humbled and reverberate, very thrilled to join you and serve the community at Moore. I look forward to supporting the vision that Ms. Jackson and the team have for everyone there. And I'm ready to strap my Texan boots, hit the ground running.
Congratulations to Mr. Howard and Ms. Gonzalez. We'll now take a brief recess so trustees and honorees can celebrate and take photos. It is 7:16. Let's aim to be back. Trustees, at 7:25, we are in recess. It is 7:26 and we are back from recess. The next portion of our agenda is for open forum. Ms. Acosta, do we have any speakers registered for open forum?
President Chapa, we do not.
Okay. No speakers on open forum. We'll move on to committee and staff reports. Our first item tonight is an update from our Finance and Academics Committee. I'll turn it over to Vice President Sarah McMorrow, who's Chair of the Finance and Academics Committee.
Thank you, President Chapa. Our Finance and Academics Committee met last Monday, I believe it was. And we are very excited to share that our Human Resources Team, led by Scott Cale, and then we also had Holly Stambo join us, they are in the process of exploring an employee childcare option just for Arlington ISD employees. This is really exciting, and we're still learning more. No information has been shared. They're still in the exploring phase. But I'm very excited about this. And I know a lot of, a lot of you guys, we've been learning about what other school districts are doing in that front for a couple of years. And we are hopeful that we will be able to offer this just for our AISD employees and more affordable options than the private daycare for our littlest AISD family members. We learned from our interim CFO, Noberta Rivas, that they have recently undergone professional learning with TASSA. And as a budget rightsizing strategy, we will be implementing zero-based budgeting at department levels, not campus levels at this time. That's my whole report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. We'll move on to Item B, a Staff Survey Results Update. Dr. Smith?
I would like to welcome Dr. Natalie Lopez, our Assistant Superintendent of Research and Accountability and Director of Research Evaluation and Analysis, Dr. Janaya Stewart. On up, they're going to give you an overview, as we do annually, of our staff survey results that we administer on an annual basis.
President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, thank you for allotting the time for this this evening. We're presenting on key findings from the 2425 Staff Satisfaction Survey, highlighting strengths and challenges while also demonstrating alignment with our district priorities. So want to give a little background. In 2022, we redesigned the staff survey so that it was more focused and actionable. We gathered input from teachers, parents, principals, and department leaders. That ensures that the survey reflects the priorities and the voices of those that we serve. And so our why for administering the survey is very clear. The staff input guides our efforts to provide them support, impact the culture positively, strengthen our communication, and increase our effectiveness. So this year, happy to report that we had an all-time high for our participation, and our total engagement increased from 52.7% to 63.2%. One of the metrics that we're able to calculate from our staff survey is our Employee Retention and Satisfaction Index. And so this, this measure is taken from staff responses to items that are related to their, their staff commitment, their overall satisfaction, and their retention intentions. So answering items about whether they reapply for their position, their plan to stay, and for how long would they recommend working for Arlington ISD to a friend. And so when we developed the survey, the, getting an understanding of the teacher retention was our largest area of focus because that was extremely important to us. That remains a top priority to have highly qualified teachers and staff members working here, which is, makes it a crucial metric. And so, in fact, our board priority, key progress measure, one of last year, was that we would grow this Employee Retention Satisfaction Index from a 3.9 to a 4.0. And as you can see from the slide, that we were able to do that and meet this goal. And I think that demonstrates the impact of the initiatives and the leadership practices here in AISD. And so now I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Janaya Stewart. She's our Director of Research Evaluation and Analysis. She handles the bulk of the work for all of the surveys that we administer here in Arlington ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board. Dr. Smith, thank you so much for having me here today. I want to highlight the magnitude of the URSI changes that Dr. Lopez just went over. Even a small uptick of .1 would reflect hundreds of staff changing their perceptions positively. And that's if no one dips. So if you take a sample size that we have around 5,000 staff, that's about 500 staff who've increased their positive perceptions. So that's not a small feat. I just wanted to highlight that. You could also look at that as about 10% of our survey sample has improved. Another thing that could lend to that, thank you, another thing that could lend itself to that is increasing participation overall, because then you have a greater sense of a true accurate picture of staff sentiment. Thank you. My first time here. So tonight, we're excited to celebrate the leaders whose intentionality, innovation, and collaboration have driven the largest gains in staff satisfaction this year. So we'll start with some campuses that demonstrated improvement in their own individual URSIs of .4 and even above that, going up to about .6. Wimbush World Language Academy increased opportunities for shared decision-making among their staff, and they also implemented weekly plus delta check-in meetings to keep a pulse of how staff are feeling. At Foster Elementary, this is really fun. They started a true believer ceremony on a monthly basis where they celebrate their staff who's, who embody their core beliefs. And they play Journey Don't Stop Believin' while they do their ceremony. At Bergen Elementary, they realized that strategic communication was a large issue, and that's been pretty consistent across our system. And they've instituted a Bergen Hub. The Bergen Hub is a streamlined way for them to get their communication among their staff. In addition to that, they also empowered teacher-led professional development. So that way, teachers learn and collaborate from each other, and they feel a sense of self-efficacy that grows through that process. At Piercy STEM Academy, they were very innovative. They took our larger district survey and made their own version of that in a way that staff could understand. And they do it every six weeks so that they can see what are staff saying? How can we respond in a more proactive manner on a regular basis? And then finally, at Butler Elementary, they worked closely with families and staff to redesign their mission, vision, and values so that people are more bought into their day-to-day work. We also had several central administrative departments who exhibited great gains. In professional learning, they also co-created new mission, vision, and values to align their team and guide decision-making. In technology operations and web services, they encourage peer-to-peer professional development so that they can build each other's skills, ensure consistent consistency across daily tasks, and boost the confidence of the workers there. And in early childhood, they're very mission-driven, but they also try to identify more opportunities for staff autonomy within that. So another metric that we wanted to highlight tonight is procedural effectiveness. This has existed on the redesigned survey since 2022 as well. But we've only recently begun to really hone in on this and track this more strategically over time. So what you don't see here is that we started with a 3.6 for the 2023 school year. And so we, you see a clear trajectory of upward momentum there. This factor is part of the Campus Safety and Working Conditions domain. And it basically covers issues about how staff feel about the collaborative approach to discipline on their campus, whether they feel their leader is ensuring safe conditions, and if everyone feels confident responding to lockdown. So here we have three campuses who've employed a variety of approaches that have significantly boosted their procedural effectiveness scores. So at Young Junior High, they co-created safety procedures, and they also consistently taught and enforced those procedures. And that resulted in them seeing a 50% decrease in severe incidents at their campus. At Martin High School, they realized that people needed more direct answers about procedures, so they started enforcing that in their weekly newsletters. And also, they, there was newsletters? Oh, and the professional learning at the beginning of the year, they took a lot of time to really go over those in detail. And at Beckham Elementary, the simple act of closing the loop on communication with teachers, letting them know how the behavior was addressed, and either through text message or email, that went a long way in improving communication and also trust with the leadership team. When there were more challenging behaviors, they also instituted wraparound meetings with interdisciplinary staff, all the staff who had a touch point with the student. And they talked about how to resolve those issues there. So these themes reflect responses to the open-ended item, asking staff, what's something that you think is working well with your campus or the district, or what's something that you'd like to improve on? And the top five celebrations highlight leaders who listen and act. So not just soliciting opinion, but doing something with that information. Colleagues who collaborate, clear systems that work, and a culture that prioritizes respect and safety. This year, several responses also referenced our new superintendent's impact, noting that we have a more collaborative and supportive district environment. In terms of suggestions from staff, staff also shared areas of improvement that would make a real difference in their daily work and the learning environment. Even though we've seen that perceptions around behavior management are improving, there's still a call for sustained commitment in this area. So staff also called for stronger campus leadership, clear district policies, better communication, and more support to manage their workloads. To support a timely, system-wide effort, our department provides a leader response toolkit. This toolkit contains access to dashboards, templates, and reflection guides that help leaders to analyze results and plan meaningful next steps and to support their continuous improvement processes. Sometimes people just don't know where to start with all the data. How do I organize these thoughts? And kind of facilitate that with my team. And they're not tied to do that. It's just an option of resources for them. And lastly, we have a set of follow-up actions that have been planned since the close of the survey in May. Most of these steps have already taken place, which shows that we're well underway with responding to staff voice. These include data digs, improvement planning, and workshops with district and campus leaders. One highlight was the superintendent's executive council session in August, where leaders explored the district-level results, noted areas that reflected what they're hearing across the district, and surfaced new opportunities to strengthen processes and focus priorities moving forward. The next steps in September and October will build on these efforts to support staff and campus improvement. In closing, the staff survey trends are positive, but the numbers don't tell the whole story. Our job tonight was to try to show you what people are doing behind the scenes on a day-to-day basis to try to improve these scores. And it's mostly driven by people and not the numbers, which is the exciting thing. So I'd like to open the floor for discussion.
Thank you. Trustees with comments or questions tonight? Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, President Chapa. Thank you for that report. It's exciting to know the things that are happening on the campuses and the things that the leadership is doing. One of the things that I picked up on that I love, I think it was at Beckham, that you said they get a response, because so many times, teachers send a student to the office, and you don't know what happened. They come back, and you don't know the consequences. And so I love that they're doing that, because I think that's going to answer a lot of questions for the teachers. But I am just so proud of all the work that is going on in the district. And I love the fact that they're showing that they love the leadership in the superintendent and the things that he has brought to the district. And so I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Chapa. And on that note, Ms. Fowler, I think that this, we, we look at this survey and, and the results, the narrative that stems from all the data that you guys collect, it's so important for us to oversee this as a board. So important because positive culture matters to student performance, and it's what sustains it. And so I appreciate this year that you guys took a different approach in the information you shared with us, because we could always look at numbers. But I like how you elevated the, the specific campuses and department teams that have shown the most growth. For example, Foster Elementary, that's a perfect example of how positive culture elevates your student performance. They're a B-rated campus now. They were in the top 25% of comparative academic growth, comparative closing the gaps. There's so much to celebrate at Foster. And I really believe from what you guys present to us that it has everything to do with leadership and culture. And so thank y'all for giving those leaders a shout out, because they most certainly, they and their staff most certainly deserve it. I also wanted to just, can you go back to the slide about the suggestions? I had a question about that. So by suggestions, just to be clear, does this mean these are the top five areas where we need to grow according to the staff survey? Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes. So the N counts are the sample size of people whose comments were tagged with these themes. So if they said anything related to student behavior, discipline, it would have been tagged behavior management practices. If it was the campus leader visibility, it would have been tagged for campus leadership practices and so on. So it starts with the most prevalent of 650 people out of all that did the survey that took the time to write something, their comment was tagged accordingly.
Okay. And I, Dr. Lopez, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is the second year in a row that behavior management practices has been number one. So I just, I want to elevate that. I know that, that it's something that we're, we're working on, but it's a pretty, by far, the number one area of growth according to this survey. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank you for your feedback. And I want to shout out Dr. Collins for asking the question to have us present it in this new format this year. Like, what actually was driving the gains that kind of led our development?
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. McMorrow. I wanted to point that out also. That has always been a big area of concern for our teachers and staff, what we hear all the time. But Ms. McMorrow is also right. This is vitally important for us and the work we do as a board. We know after our, Dr. Smith came on board, we knew what areas we're strong in and what areas need an improvement. Culture mattered a lot. And to see the positive trajectory we're making, both on this safety and behavioral side of the survey, as well as the overall campus culture, is just fantastic news. And we see the fruits of our efforts. I would also like to point out, you know, there's a wealth of information in the complete survey details which are provided to us in our portal. Any of our trustees who haven't gone there, it's, it's definitely worth spending some time digging through the data, especially if you're a data guy. Like, I know Mr. Mike is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Richardson?
I had a clarification question. When our staff is taking the survey, is it anonymous or are they putting in their ID number? How is this tracked?
This is exciting. So this was the first year they put in their team access code, not an actual employee ID. So it's not completely anonymous in that we can see how many people from each unit responded to the survey so that we could assign them to the dashboard. But they didn't have to enter any identifying information about their person beyond that.
Qualifies as a unit.
So we did it by department as much as we could. And in some cases, departments were too small for confidentiality. So we combined smaller groups. And in some cases, like Food Nutrition Services, we broke that down into about seven different buckets. So we did it in a way that people thought it would be most actionable for their group. Some people requested that ahead of time also because they wanted to have more transparency and visibility across those different units.
Do you feel like that was part of what drove up the response, is because people were able to have that sense of confidentiality?
I think, well, people actually did mention that to us explicitly, which was nice. And then also, we had a concerted effort to have survey response leaders owning the process of marketing the survey to their teams and making sure that they had their response rates going up. We had a competition going. So some people like the trophy also. So it might have been a mix of things. But I think that was a huge part, was that freedom of like, I can just say what I need to say, and it's not an indictment on anyone. It's just me being open and free to say what I need to say about my experience.
When we are getting the feedback, because I like the slide, Slide 11, that has the staff feedback, where they're, you know, where you're able to break it down, enhanced behavior management practices. So often, our teachers are the ones who are the boots on the ground, they're seeing the issues, but they also know solutions.
Yes.
Is there a place where they're able to provide their ideas and thoughts? Because when we come together, as we did in our workshop today, it was focused on when we are collaborative in our thought process, that's where a lot of times, the biggest growth and answers come from. Is there a way they're able to do that, and you see it?
Well, we are improving the survey this year, and we're building an advisory committee of principals, teachers, central admin, team members, because we want to change the way that we do the qualitative and leverage more of the thought exchange features, which allow us to customize a specific response for the campus. We'll have our external vendor then vet that and make sure there's no hallucination of AI. And that will provide, whenever people do give that feedback, it gets collapsed right now into a district-wide theme, which just says enhanced behavior management. And it might have descriptions of that as part of the district-wide paragraph. But we'll be able to have more customized descriptions with our next iteration of the survey.
Okay.
If I could jump in here, too. I think, so this, this is, if I understand this right on this slide, this is the qualitative data that we got back themed.
Yes, from the vendor, yes.
Right? So this is themed by a vendor. So a vendor looks at this and says, okay, out of all these responses, we think these fall into the behavior category and stuff. This isn't necessarily, hey, I've got a great This isn't necessarily, hey, I've got a great idea and I want to share this with y'all to think about. But I will point us back to part of the work that we did last year and that we're going to continue to build on as well. Each campus has developed a behavior management plan and improvement plan, and that is directly where that voice should be coming up, is that we want to hear those suggestions. We want our teachers to be involved in the solutions for some of these things as well. And that is where the work would happen on this. It wouldn't necessarily be in this survey that we would glean all the ideas from. It's really at the campus level because we know there are some behaviors that need to be addressed at one campus that may not be the same at the other campuses. And so we really want to hone in on that collaborative process at every individual campus level.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our next discussion and report item for tonight. We have Item C, a Facility Improvement Planning Report. Dr. Smith.
Yes, I'd like to welcome up Kelly Horn, our Assistant Superintendent of Facility Services. In the spring, you asked us as a board to start to consider, what would it take if we were to start considering future bond elections here? And so Kelly and his team and others in our district have been hard at work trying to figure out how we might be able to pull something off. I want to be clear, we haven't decided to call a bond. That is your job as a Board of Trustees, is to call a bond election. But we wanted to make sure we followed up on your request to outline, what are the steps needed to actually get something up and running if our board is to consider a bond election in the near future? And so Kelly's going to walk us through that tonight.
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. So Dr. Smith did a really good job of kind of bringing us to where we are tonight. So I'll just skip over this slide and go to this first slide on the long-range planning journey. So thanks to Ms. Norrington for helping to bring a little color to my presentation too. She did a great job. And so what we put here together is just kind of some large blocks, milestones, if you will, of things that we'll need to do in rather quick fashion before it's time to call for a bond referendum in February. So currently, the district is working, as Dr. Smith mentioned, on a number of things, facilities assessment, demographics information, and enrollment capacity studies. So we're working on that at this time. And so that, we're looking to wrap that up through the month of September and into October. If we were to go down this road, obviously, we would need to begin to have community input. We, in the past, we've considered that to be called Citizens Need Steering Committee. It could be other names, but that's what we've called it in Arlington in the past. And so we would need to bring those folks on board, set up a charter for them, if you will, and then you have the board nominate those folks. And then they would begin the hard work, right? With the information that the board put together, or pardon me, that the district put together for them to begin to analyze that and develop a list of needs that they felt would be important to represent what the community wants. And then, as we've done in the past, we bring that to you, the board, in and around January timeframe, right after the holiday, and allow you to look at that, vet that, and determine what we need to consider for a referendum. And so, and that, the latest date that we could do that would be February 13th, but so that we hit the board dates, we'd be looking at in and around the 5th or the 8th of February. This next slide just gets into a little bit more of the detail in and around that schedule that I just covered. In addition to this, then, if the referendum was called, obviously, the spring would be spent, you know, meeting with the community and giving information to them so that the voters could be informed and make an informed vote. But without going into each one of these, the real heavy work, as I mentioned before, would begin in and around mid-October through December where the community, or the citizens or the committee would gather up and have a series of meetings to discuss the needs of the district and develop a report for you, the board. And then this next slide really talks about that journey with the Citizens Capital Needs Steering Committee and breaks down kind of, you can see the proposed timeline of the dates that they would meet and the deadlines that they would have to develop that report for you, the board. And then finally, the next steps, obviously, for you all would be to consider approval of the formation of a capital needs steering committee and then select those members that you would like to be on that committee. And then finally, once we developed all the information and gathered those reports for you, then weigh those future decisions and decide how we would like to progress going forward. So with that, I'll open up for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Yes, sir.
Trustees with comments or questions? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Richardson.
So it seems to move very, pretty quickly. If I look at Slide 5, we look at the, well, even Slide 4, that we're just forming a committee in October. But then with the proposed timeline, they would have their committee meeting December, or first one in September, following our board vote. They would meet again December 2nd and their final meeting by December 16th. That seems a very quick pace to identify a large amount of needs when we have 77 schools, not to mention transportation and all the annexes across the district. Is that enough time for them to properly assess what would need to be done in a district our size?
It is a bit aggressive, given that we're considering a smaller package, a smaller bond, if you will, lesser number of years than what we typically would consider, possibly three years in this situation. We would have a much different evaluation of needs. We would look at the long-term needs. So the assessment that we're putting together as a district currently with our consultants is really looking at probably an eight-year timeline so that we could consider a smaller package now and then begin to, and have the information already developed to then consider a larger, more customary bond package of five years. And that would probably be a larger bond as well. But this would be a smaller bond amount. So I think this would address more of our maintenance needs in between those two, in between that next big bond. So it would address needs for technology, for device refresh, things like that, make sure that we have buses, keep our buses on schedule, also look at safety and security needs as well, and then some very specific facilities needs. We'd still want to touch all the campuses. That's always been the wish of the board. We would continue to develop a plan that would do that, but we would target some of those larger facility needs to be more targeted in our approach in this shorter, smaller package. And I'll let Dr. Smith add.
And I should have said this at the beginning. So this is in response to the discussion we had in the spring about a short timeline for a smaller bond amount. To your point about, is this enough time to study the whole district? No, it's absolutely not. But after we talked in the spring, we initiated the facility study that is finishing up right now. We will have that data to build off of, but we are not talking about the large bond that was passed in 2019. We are talking about a much smaller scope that would be addressing some critical needs in our system that we would get guidance on. We do think we would be able to pull that off by the spring. It is an aggressive timeline even with that. And just being honest, when we're getting this facility needs assessment data back here in September and we're in the middle of demographer things and demographer work coming up, it's an aggressive timeline, no matter what. But could we do this? Absolutely. So we wanted to make sure we brought it to you to talk about as a follow-up from the spring.
Can you remind us how much of our budget goes towards the actual, when we talk about our budget as a whole, how much of it goes to salaries, payroll compared to facilities?
Yeah, I can't, off the top of my head, tell you about the facilities amount. I can tell you that it is about 80% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits across the system, and that's just estimated right now out of a $650 million budget. And so that leaves about 20% to address everything else in the system from your day-to-day operational costs, your utility bills, your investments that you need to make in facilities and repairs and things like that. So that, it's approximately that right now.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this to us because I know in the spring we were concerned, but when we talk about bonds sometimes in Arlington, we do think of the 2019 and the really big number, but that we don't have to be scared of you coming back or the steering committee coming back with that big number. But to understand too, that we do have these smaller projects that make a really big impact at our schools. We toured the other day with CBOC and were able to tour Miller Elementary, and we saw that they had new LED lighting throughout the campus, new ceiling tiles, fresh paint, and a redo of bathrooms. That right there made Miller Elementary look and feel so good. And even the high school students who toured it were able to say, this feels different. And so little things like that make a big difference. So I appreciate you sharing that it is, does not have to be a scary thing to talk about a bond, that we can talk about smaller numbers and smaller projects that make a big impact.
Precisely.
There's one other thing I'd like to add because you mentioned calling for a vote, and I want to be clear, we're not asking for any vote tonight. This is a report. What our intention is, is to bring to you a charter for a capital needs steering committee at the next board meeting for you to consider at that time. But we wanted to lay out the timeline in front of you and make sure we got some feedback from you now before we bring that forward.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. I think it's important, and you emphasized, this isn't the big bond. This is not for building stadiums, brand-new schools, anything like that. It's looking at smaller projects that need to be done. And I think that's important for our community to realize that we're not talking about asking for a lot of money and we're going to build big things and all of that. It's for the smaller things, like Ms. Richardson said, with Miller Elementary. It's the little things that you can do that make those projects worth it. So thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Chapa. Kelly, I think Brooklyn asked the question about the long-range planning. Going back to 2014 and 2019, I think you were on a 15-year
Yes, sir.
... project timeline.
That's correct.
And of course, we're now only five, six, seven years into that. So it seems to me we've got a lot of stuff stacking up, but a lot that can be done with the smaller items. But are we going to be able to utilize the work that you've done before when doing the long-range planning going forward? Are we going to have to, is it a new, you know, have things shifted? Do we need to throw that out and start over? Where are we on doing the long range?
No, in fact, it's just building on that. And it's a good observation, you know, when we were at Miller the other evening, we talked about that, that what we did in 2014 at Miller, there were things we did there that built on our ability to then take what we did in 2019 and really move Miller over the course of two bond programs into a state, as Ms. Richardson said, where it looks fresh and new again. And so our district has a lot of needs. And our buildings change, you know, as we go along, but we are on a good track. We, what we're doing with this assessment really is just confirming that those needs that we identified in that, what we called that 15-year master plan, that those needs are still, we're still tracking along with that. Some things we've had to accelerate, right? We may have had a chiller system go out in a school and we had to accelerate that forward. So this assessment allows us to look at that and say, okay, we've done that. Let's scratch that off and let's consider what might be next at that particular campus. So it's just really building on that and building on a plan that keeps our campuses, all of them, fresh and in good condition going forward.
Yeah, and I agree with the strategy that right now, we need to, you know, we just knocked off almost a billion dollars' worth of needs.
Yeah.
And we're, you know, some of that is going outside that five-year plan, but I, you know, I think it's time to stop and reassess.
Yes.
But we still can't stop. And I think this is a good strategy to keep the ball moving forward while we think more strategically in the long run because it's a different environment right now.
That's right.
You know, our enrollment is different, the pressures we face politically from Austin and how bonds get passed is changed, and we've got to be smarter about moving forward. So I agree with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Any other comments or questions from trustees? Mr. Horn, the only thing I was going to say was, I'm comfortable with this timeline and Mr. Will Banks' questions to hit on this just now, but this is, this is not like we're going to start a new process and this is the first time we've ever been here.
That's right.
We did an '09, very modest '09 bond, bigger, much bigger '14 with a big lead-in on identifying our facility needs and did that again in '19. But you got on here, identify priority projects on one of the slides, but we're continually reassessing what our priority projects are. And we know that from the '19 bond process, we went out for, I think, 966 million, but the needs assessment actually identified, I believe it was close to 1.6 billion in needs.
That's correct.
So we have a pretty good idea of what those priority projects are because they almost made the cut in 2019 and it's a big dollar amount. But by the time, assuming that we go forward and we even approve this on a May 26 timeline, by the time that gets started in '26, that needs assessment started in 2018. So really, we were even eight years down the road of what were things we wanted to have hopefully gotten into the '19 bond that maybe we weren't able to get in.
That's correct.
So I'm very comfortable with this timeline. I'm glad that we're still going to do a committee and get community involvement because at some level, I think that we could probably do a pretty modest bond based on what we just know from what we've been working on. But we need to do that. And I do want to just, expectation set on some level, that what we can get for the money has changed.
That's right.
You know, when Mr. Will Banks and I first started on bond oversight back on the '09 bond, I think we could get an elementary school for 15 to 18, maybe 20 million dollars.
That's right.
I think some of the ones that we've recently done were closer to 50. So that, you know, just expectation setting the community for, it may seem like a, it is a modest bond to us. It may seem like a slightly, you know, a bigger dollar amount, but what we're getting is still modest.
That's right.
It's just, as with everything that we're encountering in our everyday lives, the cost of everything has gone up and that's going to be reflected in this bond too, even if what we're getting is, I think, ultimately going to be pretty modest.
Yes, sir.
But I'm glad this came forward tonight. I'm comfortable with this timeline and look forward to seeing, to hopefully calling that at our next meeting and getting that committee together and get rolling.
Absolutely.
Dr. Smith?
I just wanted to make sure the board also, I know you know this, but just to reiterate, just by starting a capital needs steering committee, if we bring that to you next time and you vote on that, that obviously doesn't mean you're calling a bond election. That gets a committee going to let us study it. And if we go through this process and we get to January and you as a board don't feel comfortable, we don't have to move forward with a bond election in February. But the work that we've done at that time can absolutely propel us forward at the right time for that bond election too. So I just want to be really clear on that, that this is, this is an aggressive timeline. I think it'll give us good information to build off of. And throughout the whole process, we'll keep you informed. You'll receive information along the way. We will have a couple of workshops along the way. And you will have the ability to say, yes, we're ready to go on this timeline, or you know what, maybe this isn't the right time and we're okay with that. But this will give us the ability to get things started.
All right. Mr. Horn, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We've got one item left on our committee and staff reports tonight, and that is a report on the Texas EdCon, which was last week, also known as the Tassasby Convention, Tassasby Convention. So are there any trustees with comments about our visit down to Houston last week? Okay. Well, I will, Ms. McMurrow.
Somebody, anybody else could. I'm sure I'm leaving something out, but it was 100% participation. And we were so happy not just to, as a whole board and superintendent team of eight, go down to Houston for EdCon, but we were joined by several of our senior staff members. And so we really enjoyed getting to know y'all better. And our board and superintendent presented on being the culture we want to see, and that's something that we're always striving to continuously improve. And we want to congratulate our board president, Justin Chapa, because he was named the state, tell me if I'm wrong, the state Tasby Secretary-Treasure-elect. So we're very proud of you, Justin, and you represent our district very well, and we're excited to see you serve in that role.
Thank you, Ms. McMurrow. I wanted to share a little bit about, Texas EdCon and Summer Leadership Institute are always a good opportunity for us to go down and learn a lot. I think folks don't understand, you know, lots of professions have continuing education requirements, and we do too as school board members, even though it's not a paying job. And those requirements seem to increase every year to the point where, in my day job as an attorney, we have continuing legal education hours. And I feel like the school board amount is getting darn close, if not exceeding the number of hours I've got to get for an attorney at this point. But it's always a great to hear what other districts are doing. We did do our presentation on building the culture you want to see, and I think, which is great, that we had a presentation on culture tonight that I think validates a lot of the things that we talked about in that presentation. So we have some real hard data to support the things that we said we were doing and achieving our goals there. But it's also a great opportunity to go down and spend the time with the team and being able to spend that time away from these formal meetings and learn together and grow as a team ourselves. Also wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Haynes. Ms. Haynes was down there. We did have 100% attendance, but she did have to leave early, but for a very good reason, but for a very good reason, which is, she had to go, she is now part of the Texas PTA State Advocacy Committee, and so congratulations to her for doing that as well. We have folks in a lot of leadership positions on this board advocating for public education throughout the state, and so I do think that this board is, in my opinion, the best board in the state, but definitely, I think, others would agree with that sentiment as well. If there's no other comments on Texas EdCon, we'll move on to our public hearing tonight. We have a public hearing on our 2024-2025 first rating. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
I'm excited to welcome Noberto Rivas up, our Nobertos are interim chief financial officer, and as you know, this is an annual requirement to hold a public hearing on our first rating, and the first rating Noberto will tell you a little bit about, but it is what we hold ourselves accountable in the state of Texas to, transparency and using our funds wisely as a school district. So Noberto, take it away.
Good evening, Board President Chapa, members of trustees and Superintendent Dr. Smith. This is an annual report, like was mentioned, that we have to present every year, and we have to allow the public the opportunity to comment. The bottom line up front is this slide right here, we're supposed to compare last year versus this year, and for both years Arlington ISD got a perfect score of 100, so congratulations to everybody involved. Three reporting requirements, the first one is the actual report from TA, and then, like I mentioned, the comparison, and then any additional information required by the Commissioner of Education. We do public, we do have a report that is published online, and this is a website where you can go in and find it, and it actually shows every single indicator, it shows everything itemized. It's on our website under AISD Financial Management Reports. So here's just a screen grab of the actual report from TA, like if you go to TA's website, this is what the report itself looks like, and then I highlighted, or I circled where it had the district score of 100. Here's a just brief overview of how the ratings are determined, you can get an A, B, C, or an F, and then there's three types of indicators, critical, solvency, and financial competence. And there's something called ceiling indicators, meaning if you miss or if you don't get those points, there's a max number of points you can get on the overall score. Here's a comparison of all the indicators by year into three different columns, the first column being critical, the middle column being solvency, and the last column being financial competence. Because both years were perfect scores, if there was a difference in the score between one year or the next, then that, we would actually go into that indicator and explain the reason for the difference. In this case, everything was the same. There are a couple, indicator number 10 and indicator number 15, you see a little star next to the number, and then you see the little note there on the bottom left why these indicators were not scored, and they have to do with COVID and the uncertainty of projecting student enrollment, so TA for a couple of years has removed some of those out. Additional information, if you look at the report itself, you'll find all the additional items that are part of the first, superintendent's contract, reimbursements received, gifts, or outside compensation reported, and any business transactions, so this is all available online. At this point, that concludes the presentation part of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. We'll now open the public hearing for the 2024-2025 first rating at 8:10 PM. Ms. Acosta, do we have any speakers registered for our hearing tonight?
President Chapa, we do not.
In that event, then I will close the hearing also at 8:10. Trustees, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Rivas? Dr. Smith?
I do want to point out, sometimes our public doesn't realize, this is TA's own mechanism to evaluate our finances as a school district, and for two years in a row, Arlington ISD has received the maximum number of points on those. And prior to that, you almost had the maximum number for a decade before. That says something about the Board of Trustees, the fiscal management and oversight that you all provide, and the previous boards provided, and the leadership of Arlington ISD previous to me. And I just want to celebrate you as a board, and previous boards, and previous superintendent and CFOs for doing great work, because that is a testament to a public that is taking account for the tax dollars that we have in the school district, and I'm honored to work with you all and thankful for your leadership of this.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas and Dr. Smith. I'm glad we have these objective indicators, because every, you know, there's a lot of sometimes misinformation out there about how school districts do spend their money, and it usually tends to crop up around election time, I have to say, but when the objective indicators come in, this district has done, and the boards have done very well, and so I'm glad that, congratulations to you and your staff for, once again, 100 rating.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, we'll move on to our action items tonight. We'll start with our Financial Futures Committee charge. Are there any trustees with comments or questions on the Financial Futures Committee charge? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the Financial Futures Committee charge?
Motion.
Have a motion for Ms. Fowler, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Ms. Haynes. Trustees will move to vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the Financial Futures charge for the next year is approved. We'll move on to action item B. This is our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee charge. Are there any trustees with comments or questions on the CBOC charge? Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Chapa. And I appreciate staff for sending the old charge in this one, and I think the previous committee did a great job of really organizing it well and moving it forward to where we are in the life cycle of this current bond in terms of the ask that we're going to be making, or need to make of the current committee, given that we're at the end of the life cycle of that bond. I do have a few questions, and there are a number of minor changes to fix, you know, a few things here and there. I'm not real fond of making those changes from the dais, so, you know, I would defer to the board if we table this for now and talk with the chair, with the Community Engagement Committee, to see if, and those changes are necessary, and then bring that back. The committee is operating currently under the other charge, and I think we can bring this back before the next meeting, at our next meeting, the next CBOC meeting by that, or we can sit and kind of go through the six changes one by one, I hope to spare the public of that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. I have a question for, I guess, Ms. Richardson, you are the chair of the Community Engagement Committee, and I'm trying to turn your mic on, and it turned itself off. Ms. Richardson, did, my understanding is that the chair and vice chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee had input on this charge?
Yes, so our chair and co-chair, they have been working on this with the chair for the last two years, Trustee Haynes. They had been working with her, also with our former CFO Darla Moss and Noberto, and they had worked on this for the past two years, and then with the current one that you're looking at here, just for the evolution, for it to come about.
Okay, I, thank you, Ms. Richardson. Is there a motion to table this until the next meeting?
Of course.
Ms. McMurro?
I just have a quick question. Would there be any implications with timelines if we tabled it to the next meeting?
I can speak to an administrative perspective. I think that if the board would like to change a few things in this, we would be fine being able to do that. My only ask is that we would do it relatively soon. I think we're in our second meeting coming up of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and we want to make sure that they have the correct charge in front of them, and not to waste our citizens' time in that. So it would be, if there are changes that you want to make, we just ask that we can make them relatively soon and get moving on this, moving forward. Is there anything that would prevent us from doing that? No, I think if you desire to do that, we can absolutely make that.
Yeah, most of the changes are cleanup. I do have some discussion, but we could do that in committee. I questioned, I mean, the only thing of substance other than cleanup, there are two things, and the other five are just cleanup of redundancy. I think they've added a section, and there are items that were still listed in the charge that were really more relevant to one of the sections below. So I think it's worthy of another discussion and look-through to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's on it, and I, and I'm sorry, do we know the date of the next CBOC meeting? It is after our next board meeting, so I think it behooves us to take an opportunity to just make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's.
Could you, could you share a summary of what your substantive changes are going to be?
Yeah, so the first one is in the purpose. The main purpose of the board always used to start with the phrase, the committee is established to maximize the potential of the 2019 bond, and then I think you guys clarified the language quite a bit, to then also say, ensure accountability, transparent, transparency, and promote public confidence in the district's use of the voter-approved fund. I'm really happy with all that, but I'm just curious of what the thought process was on eliminating the phrase, the clause, to maximize the potential of the 2019 bond, because I really like, I would really like to add it back in if there is no, if no one feels strongly on why it was taken out.
Ms. Richardson?
Trustee Haynes, you may be able to help me weigh in a little bit, because you chaired this for two years, but my understanding of the reasoning of that is that the charge has changed over time, and the CBOC, which if we can just call it that to save a little bit of time, the CBOC, one of the things that had to be clarified with that committee is, when it comes to CBOC, the funds have really already have been spent. There is nothing for the board, the committee members to maximize. What they are doing is they're overseeing the funds that have already been spent, making sure they are appropriate, making sure the work that has been done, that was said it was going to be done. It's a checks and balances, so it is not on this committee to then go out, and they are getting the different bids, they are selecting the vendors. When the work is already coming to us, it is already been done, especially the committee the last, I'm in my third year on the committee, they truly are being, giving presentations by Mr. Horn of what has been done. Is it what we told the community we did? Is it what we promised we were going to do? Or is it things like, some of our football fields, we found out we were going to have to come back, cut back some of the concrete work, because the expense, the things that had changed, the footwork was going to need to change. When it came to us in the board presentation, we also said, but we want to make sure there's equity across all the stadiums. So that is where we did it as a board versus as the committee, they really are monitoring the use, not maximizing.
So I, I'm just going to add that that's absolutely right. That discussion did happen with the current committee chairs and some staff, just about how the perception of the role of the community committee members, when we tell them that their job is to maximize something, it is putting out the perception that they are there to maybe shift the flow of the bond work, or give insight or ideas into how to shape the bond when it has already been voted on and shaped. And so we wanted to take away that misconception over what the committee work actually is. We wanted it to really hone in on that, that Mr. Horn and his team are presenting to us, and we are overseeing the work that they have already maximized on their end, that it's not committee work that is maximizing that.
Yeah, I would use two examples as a counter to that. Back when President Chapa and I were on this committee, we were oftentimes asked, hey, we have this opportunity at Arlington High to add hardscape and landscaping and wayfinding to make it clear where the interest, the main entrance to the building is. That wasn't in the original scope, and that is a great example where we maximize the potential of the bond to add a much-needed scope to the Arlington High project. And then what we're asking, and the reason why I think the whole change of this charge is, is because now we're at the end, we're asking them to find ways to utilize the leftover funds and interest in ways to maximize this bond's potential. So that's exactly what we're asking them to do with this change. So I really like adding that back in, because as long as we're clear about what that phrase means, and I think the change that we've made is a clear example of what it means to maximize the potential of the 2019 bond.
If I may, Ms., I don't want to put words in Ms. Richardson, Ms. Haynes's mouth, but what I took away from your comments is that this was an intentional change of language to reflect what the committee generally does. And I know, Mr. Wilbanks, that, and I just question for you, in the committee charge itself, which is on pages, I don't know exactly what page, I think it goes from three to four.
Yeah.
There is a bullet for determine allowable use of excess bond funds. So I feel like substantively, this is still here, and it sounds like from Ms. Haynes and Ms. Richardson, based on their discussions with the current committee CBOC chair and vice chair, that this was an intentional change to reflect what they generally do.
And as long as there was an intentional discussion about why that needed to change, I was just questioning why it was, and I would definitely defer to the work and the decision of the previous Community Engagement Committee on the effort on this. My question was more why it was removed, because I think that gives us cover, those three things give us cover for everything in the charge, and that, I think, speaks volumes to the main shift and focus for this, because all of the other things that are listed there are also covered by the charge. So that's the reason why, I was just curious why it was left off. If you guys feel strongly about it, I'm fine with it. It's just, I think, you know, it's traditionally been there, and it's now more important than ever in my mind, that, setting the tone that your job is to help us, now that we have leftover funds, how do we maximize what we could do with this bond?
So based on the answers, it sounds like that discussion has happened, so can we talk, can you summarize what your second substantive proposal would be?
So one of the things, you know, we're being asked tonight to shift procurement method for phase four of the bond to job order contract methodology of procurement, which I love, because it's flexible, it's ideal for small things, but we know from history that it comes with risk, and I think being able to make sure we have the right processes and controls in place to manage that well is important, and we removed the audit function, the review, the audits, or the ability in the charge to ask for audits, and it's been a while since we've done a construction audit on this bond. So I think that's a very important, still that oversight function of the bond is still important, even though we're at the tail end of it, but that should be included back in the actual charge portion, so that was the only other substantive change, everything else was cleaning up some of the language and reducing redundancy for things that were added in later paragraphs.
Okay, and?
Then clarifying formatting.
Okay, Ms. Richardson or Ms. Haynes, do you all, as the current and former chairs of that committee, have any feedback on that?
So, no. Since my time on this committee, we have never discussed auditing construction ever, so I'm sure that it was removed due to the fact that it has not been necessary in the current committee work. I don't know if there's, I would think that that is the reason that it was removed. I don't have any insight, it definitely was not discussed.
It is a bond oversight committee, and so it seems that would be a pretty big omission to leave out audit, and given that there's probably going to be some audits coming down the pike soon on, you know, construction audits that they will review, right, Mr. Horn? So?
And you feel like it would be run through this charge, not audit committee that you chair that it would go through? And so you want to see it on here in writing, or?
It's been traditional, and this is an oversight committee for the bond, and when, in the past, Mr. Horn- And when, in the past, Mr. Horn, you can speak to this, when a construction audit is done, they are briefed on the audit and as part of their oversight function on the bond. Is that, am I correct, Mr. Horn?
Yes, so we, as we, we typically will audit certain types of projects, CMAR in particular, and then anytime there's a major change order in a CSP project, and those are, those are all organized through the, through the internal auditing committee. So we, we have an external auditor that does that, but they report directly to our internal auditors who report to you. So that's all, that's the way we make sure we process that. Then those audits, when we do those, they'll be then reviewed and relayed to the CBOC as well. But that generally follows after they've been through this, the Board of Trustees.
And I think that's where, and I want to make sure that, one, I am, first, let me say thank you. I'm glad we're doing this from the dais. It's a group discussion, we're going to vote on it. I am sorry that we're sitting here for an extra amount of time, but I think it's good that we are discussing this together and having our questions answered in real time by you. So let me just start with thank you. The way that I have understood it as incoming chair is that all of those audits would be run through our audit department. You would receive a copy, Trustee Wilbanks and his committee would review it. It would be presented to the board, and it would be presented to CBOC. But it was nothing that they, CBOC, would be in charge of. That is why the audit charge has been removed from this, because it's not, we're not asking two different groups to do the same thing. Also, it takes away that, "Well, it's my job." No, it's my job. Who's doing the audit? Well, I thought you did it. No, I thought you did it. That is not what we've been asking CBOC to do. An audit is in fact, an audit, so it would be funneled through our audit committee. That is why I understood that it had been removed.
Well, part of the purpose of the bond oversight committee is to build confidence, I think, what's that last phrase, with the district's use of the bond. And I can think of no better way for this group to be advocates and, and help build confidence in the public by saying, "Yeah, we reviewed, we reviewed the audit report, and we saved $3 million." In fact, it, it comes up every time when they do a report to us about how much money we've saved on the audits that we've done. So I, I would respectfully disagree that I think it is an important part of their charge, and it's one they've taken seriously in the past.
Okay, I think I need, I'm going to stop real quick. One, I do think it's important, we do take it seriously. What I'm saying is, I don't think it falls under CBOC's charge to lead that audit process.
We're not asking them to lead the audit process. We're asking, Mr. Horn, to present the findings, to show the committee that yes, we have, we have dotted the i's and crossed the t's and made, made sure. And then now those, when, when questioned in the public, those committee members can confidently say, "Oh, yeah, we've made sure that everything is on the up and up, and we've maximized our return, and we have not let any vendors do sloppy work or get by with things that are over charges or bill us." So I think all of that goes a long way to build the public confidence, which is up front and center in what you have here.
Absolutely.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I ask a clarifying question? I think that might, might hopefully move the ball forward here a little bit. Mr. Horn, based on the, the charge that is in front of us tonight, audit finding results are still going to be presented to CBOC, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I can see several things in the charge that this would fall under, including monitor, project timelines, budgets, expenditures to ensure alignment with expectations. So I, your commitment from your staff is, is the process is not going to change.
That's right.
This is just a change in the language of the charge.
That's correct. Yeah, we.
To de-emphasize, to, to not suggest maybe that CBOC has somehow got a bigger hand in, in driving the audits. They're more of a receiver of information from the external audits.
Certainly, yes. We'll, we'll do that regardless. We do that annually to make sure they're, they're up to speed, so.
Okay. I'm going to turn.
I will just say real quickly, I think it was me that changed that language when I reviewed, and it was simply for that clarification piece. The intent, because I think we listed it in there multiple times, that you, the, the committee would receive reports from the administration, and the intent was never to not have them get audit reports, but the intent was to clarify that they weren't in charge of securing the audit for the construction projects. So that's, if I need to change any of that language, I think that was actually my change along the way.
Yeah, that was never the intent of the committee.
Let me, Mr. Mike would like to jump in here, and I'd like to give him a chance.
I'm just trying to.
Mr. Mike.
Figure out, we're talking about the 2019 bond, and we're talking about adding in audit language for the 2019 bond that is pretty much complete.
We're wrapping up. We're moving into Phase Four and Five now, and they're small projects.
And the CBOC, they've gotten regular updates with regard to this bond.
We do that annually, yes.
So I think we're playing with semantics here, because when I look at the committee charge under number one, when we review the current bond projects, I believe, at least under my understanding, that if we're going to do audit stuff, when they receive regular updates on the status of all current bond-funded projects, could the audit portion not fit within that sentence?
Certainly.
Or do we have to outline specifically audit? That's, that's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Is that, that is a, I guess, a question for you, Mr. Horn. You just said that, that the external audit results will be presented to CBOC.
Yes, sir. That's, for, and for transparency purposes, we absolutely do that, yes.
Okay. I have no other lights lit up. Are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Wilbanks, you said you had some other conforming changes. Are there the, like typo variety, or that could just be sort of non-proton?
Missing header, there's bullet number two on the committee membership is really two bullets. I think they got, you got conflated in the formatting. They're just minor things.
Okay, so we can, and we can generally clean up typographical type stuff after a vote. Okay, so having that discussion, is there, is there a motion to, is there any further discussion on the CBOC charge?
I was going to make a motion to table, but I can sense the room and that the current committee is not interested in, like, taking this up.
Sorry, I thought it was on.
Oh, that's great.
So I'm sensing the room, and I thought there would be an opportunity to discuss this with the committee, which I'm brand new on. And I, I do feel strongly about these and feel the need to keep those in. And, but I'm sensing that the committee feels they've already put in the effort and that we should, and that they're not interested in tabling.
Ms. Richardson?
As chair, I personally don't mind tabling it to make those small corrections that we need to, but I do think it was good that we had this discussion, because as you said, you're new to the committee, so you can understand a little bit of the history that came with it. I don't have a problem tabling it, as long as we can get back to a discussion as soon as possible, so we can get an updated charge to the committee, because in our last meeting, we did tell them that at their next meeting, they would have something current to work with. And I want to make sure we keep that, keep our word to them and make sure that it's updated and relevant.
And I want to be respectful of all the work that has gone into this. I know that a lot went into this. And it is overall a much-needed improvement, even though we're at the tail end of the bond. This is a much better charge than what they were operating under, and much better, much better organized than the, the existing charge. So thank you for all the work that you guys put into this. And with that, I would move to table this, to clean up and, and maybe continue the discussion on those other items, and decide as a board what's needed and what's not. Decide as a committee what's needed and what's not.
Is there a second? I have a, a motion to table from Mr. Wilbanks. I have a second from Mr. Mike. Is there discussion on the motion to table? So I, I actually will oppose the motion to table. I, I think from the discussion tonight, I'm sensing from the board, there's not an appetite for the, for the substantive amendments, because it sounds like there's a consensus that they're, they're in the charge, and we have the commitment to do the external audits. And to the extent it's typographical or formatting corrections, I mean, we can, we can do those having approved the substance of, of what is here tonight. And, and if something substantive pops up, the committee can always come back and, and amend the charge. But with that, we have a motion to table with a second from Mr. Mike. So trustees, we will now vote on the motion to table the CBOC charge. The vote is three in the affirmative, four in the negative, the motion to table fails. If there's not another motion pending, I will ask for a motion to approve the CBOC charge as presented. I have a motion from Ms. Haynes. Is there a second? I have a second from Ms. McMurro. Trustees will move to vote on the CBOC charge. All those in favor, green light. All those opposed, red. All green lights, that's seven to zero in the affirmative. The CBOC charge is approved. We'll move on to action item C, adoption of our district performance objectives and HB Three goals. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, I would like to welcome Dr. Collins and Dr. Champion and Dr. Lopez, and looks like every other doctor in here up to the podium this evening. They're going to go over a brief explanation of our district improvement plan objectives and, and goals for y'all this evening.
Good evening, President Chapa, Dr. Smith, and trustees. Tonight, we are here to provide an overview of the district improvement plan, performance objectives, and our House Bill Three goals. We are seeking action tonight, and we'll ask for approval at the end of the presentation. So just an overview, last year, our Board of Trustees worked really hard for many weeks to identify these priorities for work here in Arlington ISD. And so as we started working this summer with our district and campus staff on the district improvement plan, these priorities were the foundation of the work that we were doing together. We brought together campus and district leaders in the month of June for a couple of days. We broke them up into some different table groups and really dug in deep to the data to try to figure out what was the current reality in our data, and what were the kinds of improvements that we needed to see moving forward. This was a new process for our campus leaders to be involved in. We heard lots of positive feedback from our campus leaders, because they had appreciated getting to be a part of that district data dig and to see how their own campus data compared with this work. It was our goal going into the district improvement planning process that every staff member in Arlington ISD could see themselves in the district improvement plan. That hasn't necessarily been the case in the past, but that was something that we were very passionate about moving forward. So some of our initial conversations were also grounded in the work that we were doing together last spring with our strategic planning process that we were in the middle of. And then this summer, we had some conversations about, you know, where is it that we want to go with that, and how do we remain faithful and true to these priorities that have really seemed to resonate with the district? And so I, I've mentioned this to you guys before, but just wanted to formally present it to you tonight. We're bringing forward a recommendation that with our 24, 25 priorities, that we would make an adjustment to Goal Five and change the resources area to talent in resources. That way, we could ensure that our staff sentiment is captured there, so that we would be maximizing our, our resources and people to promote a thriving district while maintaining the sound fiscal management. That allowed all of the work that we were talking about in our district improvement planning process to fall somewhere underneath these priorities. And so we're very excited about that. So the next 10 slides have a lot of words on them, and I am not going to read to you all of the words on the slides, but I needed them to be here for our community members so that they would have access through Board Book. Up at the top, I just want to orient you, that's where you'll see the goal statements. And what I'm going to do instead is I'm going to highlight one performance objective on each slide, just so that you can see kind of how deep each one of these goes. If you have specific questions about any of these, we're happy to talk about them, and we can phone a friend if there are others in the room that need to talk about those. But here, so Goal One, academic growth. Performance Objective One is all about literacy. And we spent a lot of time together tonight during the workshop, talking specifically about early literacy with, through the professional learning work that we did. We talked about the structured literacy work that's happening in the system, the professional development that's happening there, the learning walks that are happening, the coaching that's happening for our teachers. So even though Performance Objective One looks like we're trying to move from this number to that number over a given period of time, the strategies are much deeper. And I think that you will likely see those float up in our next steps in the work, which is establishing our key performance measures. And so just know that all of that is there. Performance Objective Two is similar for mathematics, and then you'll see here, three is for science, four is for social studies, and then five is CCMR, which, you know, is required for us with House Bill Three. Performance Objective Six, I want to talk a little bit more about, because this is a new sentiment for us in our district improvement plan centered around artificial intelligence. This is work that's been happening in the district for a little bit of time, but we're finally to the point that we feel like it should rise to the level of the district improvement plan. And what I want to point out to you here specifically in this performance objective is on the second line. So we're talking about educators, we're talking about leaders, we're talking about staff, and we're talking about students. And so Steve Simpson and his TI squared group has been working on this for a while, and we're very excited about the work that has already happened and the work that we're going to continue to do here, as we're talking about artificial intelligence and the support that we would need to provide our staff members as well as our students with this area. So I'm going to move on to Goal Two, which is culture, and I'm going to specifically highlight Performance Objective Three here. One and two are similar to what we've had in the past. Performance Objective Three, you'll see is about our net promoter score, but we have added that not only are we going to look at our parent net promoter score, but we're also going to look at our staff net promoter score moving forward. We've already had some conversations just today with our data team, having conversations about, you know, what could that look like for us moving forward? Some of the feedback that we received through our INSPIR audit was that this was an area of need for growth in our system, and so we wanted to lean into that and have added that in to this specific performance objective. I think it's interesting to think about the strategies that we have listed here, because it's really closely connected with our communications team and the family engagement team there. So thinking about the family engagement plan, Erin Peralis presented to you last spring about that work, and so some of that will fall under there as a strategy, as well as expanding some customer service learning opportunities throughout the district. The Performance Objective Four for culture is about articulating the desired student experience. And so what is it that we really want to see happening for every student in Arlington ISD? And so for those of you who are familiar with continuous improvement tools and strategies, once we identify what we want for the student experience, then we can think about, so what is it that teachers need in order to provide that for students? And then how do we back up another step? What is it that our campus leaders need to provide to teachers for that student experience? And then what is it that our district leaders can provide to our campus leaders, right? So it just helps us string out what is that work going to look like? And so we're very excited to start this work. We've been working with the University of Washington for a little over a year, and this is some of the conversation that keeps coming up, and so we've added that to the district improvement plan. Goal Three is around safety and discipline, and so I want to point out to you, Performance Objective Two, that was discussed in an earlier conversation this evening, whenever we were talking about the staff survey. So we do want to continue that work on the behavior plans that are being implemented at the campus levels, and making sure that they are aligned with our district improvement plans, so our campus and district plans are aligned. We have seen growth in these areas, but we know that there is still a lot of work to do, and our OSL leaders are really leading the charge as they're partnering with campus leaders. Just like we talked about last year, it is important that these plans are very specific to the needs of individual campuses. We don't want to be telling campuses what it is that they need to be doing. Goal Four is about marketing and engagement, and so we'll highlight Performance Objective Two here. We're going to be focusing on that district sentiment. And so we've actually contracted with a group called Meltwater, who is a media monitoring group, and they help us do things like compare mentions and likes, and, you know, the way that we're reaching out through different media organizations. And so we're excited about just kind of gathering the baseline on district sentiment so that we can continue to improve district sentiment moving forward. And again, this is another recommendation that came out of that INSPIR audit. Performance Objective Four with marketing and engagement is again about baseline data, and this is baseline data for understanding student withdrawals in the system. So what is the reason why students are withdrawing in our system and trying to figure out, figure out that why, and just establish a process for that. Goal Five, talent and resources now. So Performance Objective One is complicated, and I'm going to do my So performance objective one is complicated, and I'm going to do my very best to explain it to you. So I see three pieces in performance objective one. So on the first line, we want to reduce the general operating fund budget deficit by 33%. Okay? So that's the first part of it, reduce the deficit by 33%. While, on the second line, maintaining the general operating fund balance threshold at 25%, right? So we're not just going to borrow from fund balance to pay off the debt, right? We want to maintain the fund balance. While at the third time, the third line there, you'll see, we're going to maintain 60% of the total adopted budgeted funds and instruction and instructional related services. So we're not going to steal money out of instruction to, you know, make other budget things happen in the system. And so it's a very meaty performance objective, but we are committed as a team to make this happen in the system. And so there are hard conversations that are happening, and this is big work for us. But including it in our DIP, just, you know, it will help to hold us accountable. And then performance objective five, Arlington ISD will finalize the curriculum management audit and develop an action plan and begin responding to the recommendations in that audit. So you may know that we had lots of auditors in our system, and we got some initial informal feedback from them as they were leaving last week. We're looking forward to getting that final plan. But we know that, you know, it feels like, woo, we're done with the audit, but then the results come, right? And then there is a lot of work to be done. And so this is not work only for our academics team, but the curriculum management audit is going to give us findings all the way across our system. And so it's going to be really important that we come together to develop an action plan so that we can meet the needs there. All right. So before we go on to House Bill three goals, is there any discussion that you want to have about any of this? And then I'll ask Dr. Lopez to come up next.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Are there trustees with comments, questions? Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa. Thank you, Dr. Collins. I think you did a great job explaining.
Thank you.
What you said was complex. Just two quick things. First question about goal one, academic growth. Can we go back to that slide?
Sure.
I know that, not today's workshop, but recently, we had a workshop on academic growth, and we were analyzing as a board our STAR data and as well as other data points, including our K through two screener.
That's right.
When we talk about the EOI screener, are we talking, what assessment instrument are we talking about in K through two?
Do you want to jump in first, Emily?
Sure. For literacy, it's the M class. And then for early numeracy, that's NWA MAP.
Okay. And our goal, our performance objective is zooming in on reading. Is that correct?
Performance objective one is specific to reading, and performance objective two is specific to mathematics.
Okay. And I like that we are creating a goal specific to early literacy and early numeracy because if y'all remember, when we looked at our grade three STAR data, we actually saw a bigger improvement in percent approaches than many other grade levels in reading, which is great. It's our early literacy that's still kind of, you know, kind of stagnant. And I know that staff has been working a lot. I know we'll get some findings. I know that professional learning is really, you know, intentional right now, and we will also have more frequent professional learning than any other calendar that we've, we've adopted in recent years. So I just appreciate that that's its own performance objective. And I always say this, but I want to say it again. I think that going after that is absolutely multifaceted because it's going to help our students, it's going to help them in life, and it's going to help them be more successful on any assessment. So early literacy, I just think, is a really important performance objective. The other question I had, I agree with changing our resources priority to talent and resources. When Dr. Smith first mentioned that, I definitely see why we would do that. Can we run to that slide real quick?
This one you want?
I'm sorry, there was, what, what slide number? There we are.
Yes.
So when we talk about, we're responding to the curriculum audit, we are, what was the other one? Sorry, I'm trying to keep up with the other page. There were more performance objectives. There's a lot on this one. Are we just generally aiming for maximizing our talent to, like, be responsive to a lot of this internally and not have to consult out? Can I have a little bit more context as to how we're maximizing talent with some of these performance objectives?
Yeah, so I'll talk through a couple of them, just to give you a little bit of an overview. And Mr. Cale, feel free to jump in if I miss anything. So whenever we, I'm going to take us back to the first set of slides, performance objectives here. So number two is about maintaining that highly competitive compensation and benefits plan within the top quartile of the district. So we believe that that will help us maximize our talent by, it's about that retention, right? We want to maintain, ensure that we're both attracting and retaining staff in our system that are the very best staff. And then whenever you look at performance objective three, that's about establishing some innovative college student-to-teacher pathways. We already have some pretty interesting things that are happening, but we've also had some really deep conversations with a couple of universities that are very close to us here in Arlington about some strategies that are that direct student-to-teacher pathway. And so what are the things that we can do to partner with our universities in a very different way? And then I think it's interesting to look at performance objective four as well because that's about the comprehensive program evaluation process. And so been having a lot of dialogue about what are all of the different kinds of programs that we have in the district? So programs could be recruiting programs, right? Programs could be literacy intervention programs. Programs could be behavior management programs, right? Programs could be a massive amount of things, but what we need to do as a system is to figure out what are all of the programs that we have in the district, which ones are trying to accomplish the same kinds of tasks, and then which ones give us the best return on our investment moving forward so that then we could choose to maybe reduce the number of programs that we have and offer better supports for our teachers, offer better supports for our staff members, and potentially even, you know, have, I don't know, just kind of a different work ethic moving forward, that we're not trying to support 12 different things out there that are essentially the same kind of goal.
Thank you. And I, one return on investment example that we've monitored and I hope we keep monitoring is our return on investment for universal pre-K. I think that the data is always interesting to see how kindergarten readiness is more evident for students who have completed pre-K with us versus no pre-K or even outside pre-K. So that's one example of oversight that I hope we can continue. And I just, I love this. I love the addition of talent because at the end of the day, it's the people, not the programs.
Right.
That are really going to make a sustainable difference in our school district. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. McMurro, I failed to talk about number six. Mr. Peak was here at our last board meeting and talked really specifically about the recruitment strategies that they're using. And so that's something else that we want to be sure to evaluate and make sure that we're, you know, remaining faithful to those commitments.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, President Chapa. And, you know, I agree, the vast majority of our budget, 88% is our talent. They're our most valued resource, and they're the ones that make the difference when it comes to achieving our North Star goal.
That's right.
To make sure all students graduate exceptionally prepared. And the other thing, I won't go into details, but kudos to you guys. Ever since I've been on the board, there's a, a lack of alignment with our district priorities and our DIP and our CIPs. This is the first time in seven years that I've seen complete alignment between these and the fact that you have everything branded. We just talked about culture, be very explicit about your priorities and goals, and be 10 times more than you think you need to be. And this is living up to that very important tenet that we talked about in our presentation in Tasman that's talked about in the Culture Code. So the fact that there's alignment from our board priorities, I think, gives us as a board that grounded foundation of what we do and the priorities we set matters across the whole organization. And we're all, I know we're, you know, these things are, I think in the Culture Code, they talked about the magnetic field that aligns all compasses to true north for us as a district. And this is the first time I've seen that alignment in action. I'm just excited. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Any other comments or questions from trustees on this portion? Mr. Mike?
Thank you, Dr. Collins, for your very detailed presentation. In regards to the academic growth, the numbers look very attainable as far as the percentages. I would hope that we consistently keep in the back of our minds of our lowest performing students because we can only get so much from the top. And I think the only way that we can achieve greatness is to take those low performing and bring them up. With regards to the artificial intelligence portion, look, every time I hear AI, I think of the STAR test, and it's just red flags, right? So I guess you guys got a plan for that. Sounds good. On the portion with the culture, the net promoter score for the annual parent and staff surveys, do we have the current net promoter score right now, and what are we trying to get that to?
Yeah, we do. We have not pulled together the staff net promoter score. We were looking at that earlier today, trying to determine, you know, where is kind of our baseline there? So I will work on a board bulletin and send that to you just so that you have it. And then if we want to actually make an adjustment and include those numbers in the official performance objectives, we can make that adjustment pretty easily.
But we do have the parent one from last year. That was listed in our key performance measures from last year. And so we will, we just, we didn't articulate the staff piece last year, and we wanted to do that this year. So we just needed to, we combined them both in the statement, and that's why we didn't list a number. But we will make sure you all have those baseline numbers.
For the marketing engagement piece, I think this is what a lot of us sitting on the board was asking for. The key pieces to me that stand out, I mean, two, three, and four, but primarily three and four, of going out and understanding what are the reasons people are leaving and figuring out how to combat that and get people to come back. So just, that's just excellent work. With regards to the talent and resources, performance objective number one, I mean, it's just a kudos to, to the entire staff. You guys put your own guardrails on this fund reduction to say, look, we're going to reduce, but we're going to ensure that these certain pieces stay in place instead of just a massive cut across the board. So, I mean, it just goes to the culture that we talk about and the good things that we want to do. Overall, with this entire plan that I see so far, I think it goes to the testament of what we want to do to make this a premier district. I think we all feel like this is the best district in Texas, and we're trying to show the numbers for it. And these are the seeds that are being planted to bear that fruit. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Collins.
All right. Dr. Lopez, I'll bring you up. She's going to talk to us a little bit about House Bill three goals.
All right. So House Bill three requires districts to set annual public and board-approved goals in three key areas: early literacy, early numeracy, and then college career and military readiness. The goals are supposed to be specific, measurable, and targeted for improvement across five years. And this is the fifth year of that timeline. So for the 25, 26 year, the three goals that we're proposing are that we'll improve the percentage of third-grade students' performance in reading on the STAR from 40 to 41% at the MEATs level. That's early literacy. Then for early numeracy, improving the percentage of third-grade student performance in math on the STAR tests, or excuse me, STAR test, from 35 to 36 at the MEATs level. And then for CCMR, that our AISD graduates will increase their Domain One CCMR point acquisition from 92 to 93%. That brings us to the discussion portion. So we already had plenty of that, and just the gentle reminder that this is an action item that y'all get to vote on.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Comments or questions from trustees on this portion of HB three goals? I just want to reemphasize that, that setting the goals at the MEATs level or above, that's not, that's not the passing level. And, because that, that language, I think, trips some people up in the community, and we hear, you know, why are, why are we setting a goal for only 35% of our kids to pass on math? And that's, that's not what this is saying. This is targeted at a very specific level of accomplishment on the STAR.
Yes, sir.
That is higher than passing.
That's correct.
Okay. Having no lights up for comments or questions from trustees, is there a motion to adopt the district performance objectives and HB three goals?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Wilbanks. I'll give the second to Ms. Fowler. Trustees will move to vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the district performance objectives and HB three goals are adopted. Thank you, Dr. Collins.
Thank you. And I do want to give a kudos to the leaders in our district. Our campus principals were so instrumental in even this district improvement plan work and then the work that has happened since those initial June and July meetings that we had that has continued, and our cabinet team is the best cabinet team in town. So like, it's just amazing. So just thankful for the hard work that we're willing to do together. Yeah, it's great.
Trustees, I wanted to thank you for getting those adopted tonight. I did want to thank Dr. Collins and everybody in here, just like she said, they've done great work. I also wanted to let you know, just a reminder and process pieces. So from here, from these, now we go back as a cabinet, and we take the information that you just approved, and we say, what are the key progress measures, the most important levers that we want to bring to you all and that you all would include in my evaluation moving forward? And we plan to bring that to you at the next meeting coming up to talk through those. So thank you for giving us that foundation tonight, and we look forward to talking to you more about that in the next meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll move on to action item D, adoption of our campus performance objectives. Dr. Smith?
Well, Jennifer and Brett are still here, and any other doctors that would like to come up as well, they're more than welcome. But they're going to elaborate more on where we are with the campus performance objectives.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate just how exciting it is, as Mr. Wilbanks mentioned earlier, the way that these two processes dovetail into each other, and I hope that you'll see that as we're talking through that. So the purpose of this presentation is to really focus in on that campus improvement planning process. And just like with our district improvement plan, we are seeking action tonight to approve these performance objectives. As we talked about earlier, the work that we did this summer on the district improvement plan with our campus leaders was different than what they had experienced before. So what that allowed our campus leaders to do was to take the processes and the tools that we used during the district improvement planning process and for them to carry them back and to use those tools and strategies with their campus leadership teams. And we heard all summer long about how thankful our principals were that they had been able to experience that work on the district improvement plan and then reiterate that work and use it with their own leadership teams. And so Dr. Champion is going to talk about the work that the OSL team has done over the last few months, working with our campus leaders, and where we are now with our campus improvement.
Thanks, Dr. Collins. Good evening, President Chapa, board members, and Dr. Smith. It's an honor to get to stand before you and talk about this, this, these, this planned development with a goal of creating coherency across our district. And so that's exactly what Dr. Smith and Dr. Collins and the team set up. I had the joy of just walking in when this was, this was transpiring, and so it was great timing on my part. But it was, it's a terrific system. You can see in your presentation, there was a, there was a data dive and then looking at problem statements, one of the key points was identifying root causes. We know that that is a key element of ensuring that our plans are actually addressing the things we need them to address. And so our principals also, from those root causes, identified their strategies as well as their professional learning needs, and y'all heard a lot about that before this particular meeting started. This was a, an improvement planning tool that our Office of School Leadership put together, the brilliant executive directors, principal supervisors that I have the pleasure of working with every day. Some of the things that we thought about whenever we did this work was, number one, as you've heard 1 million times already in this presentation, alignment, alignment, alignment with throughout this entire school system. We wanted to make sure that we use the start of the school year as a way to garner good stakeholder input, and so our campuses did that. And then we had what we called a two-plus-one method. One of the things that you probably noticed was that campus improvement plans are a lot thinner this year than they have been in the past. And that's because we wanted every, we wanted this alignment to be around reading, math, and one additional goal. We call it two-plus-one, reading, math, plus one. And so most of our, our campuses either chose safety and discipline, or they chose culture as their plus one. But every school is focusing on reading and math, and again, using that needs assessment to determine what their strategies are to improve in those areas. It's also important to note that our campus improvement plans are living documents. Sometimes you have to pivot. Something comes up in the first big assessment, and you realize what we thought we were trying to accomplish didn't get accomplished. to accomplish didn't get accomplished. And so then we're able to pivot and make some adjustments as those move forward. The goals, though, do stay the same. In terms of the timeline, this was shared with our principals as well, and so it kind of goes back in time and forward in time. But what's important to note on this is that, that this is not a one-and-done thing. One of the pieces I appreciate that Dr. Smith and Dr. Collins have, have instilled in this district is that our plans don't sit on a shelf, and then we pull them back up a year later, just to present to the board, just to say it all again. This is something that we're going to be talking about. As a matter of fact, we have what are called academic conferences coming up, where Dr. Smith and Dr. Collins sit with our principals, and they talk through, where are we on the implementation of our plan? Where are we seeing successes? And where are we seeing areas that, that, that we continue to struggle in? And so it goes all the way through an end-of-year reflection, and then we repeat, wash, rinse, and repeat. And, and we start talking about the improvement process moving forward as we, as we roll forward. And that's our, that's our presentation tonight, and we recommend approval of these objectives.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Collins, Dr. Champion, trustees, Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, guys. Brett, Dr. Collins, you're speaking my love language. Can you say that word one more time, the search for the C?
Yes, yes, coherency, sir.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. We're building coherence across the system, and, and that alignment, I feel that magnetic field getting stronger and stronger and stronger. So, thank you for the changes, and again, I'll echo what I said before, this alignment and this coherence, and that it's all ties back to what? Our board priorities that we set. One question I do have is, you talked about that need, that needs assessment, that critical piece. In, where are we in terms of having implemented five Y analysis with?
Yeah.
It seems like we're all over the map. Some people understand it, some people don't, and that's been a missing piece.
Yeah.
And it's a critical piece.
Absolutely.
And so where, where are we as a system in really understanding?
Yeah.
How to actually do that with fidelity?
So in the, in the June, I believe it was the June district improvement plan meetings, that was actually a protocol that was used with all of our principals, looking at district data, with the goal then of principals taking that, the five Y protocol specifically, back to their schools, working with their leadership teams, or their longer, their, their larger campus, campus teams. Some, some did this with their entire, with their entire staff, faculty and staff, and utilizing the five Ys to do that root cause analysis. So I would actually say that it's being implemented well in our system. It's definitely one of the key protocols we use to, to drive that needs assessment.
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
I also want to give a shout out, because Dr. Wirtz is the one who led us through that five Y protocol in June, and the ability for our staff, and I think Kristi helped with this as well, the ability for all of our principals to see this in action from a district perspective, really led them to be able to apply it to a campus perspective. So that modeling in June, I thought, was outstanding by our team.
Any other trustees with comments or questions tonight? Ms. Richardson?
I wanted to thank you for...
I'm sorry, Ms. Richardson, I hit the wrong button. Just, there you go.
Thank you for talking about it, and how you're going to use it as a living document, and not something that sits on the shelf. We talked about that recently when we talked about our own board handbook, and how we were going to use it, and it was not going to be a document that just sat on our shelf, and we pulled it out once a year and approved it, and we moved on, but it would be something that would govern us and make us better. You are showing how you're doing that, the exact same thing, on your campuses, for all of your staff, but treating it that way as a living document. It just makes me happy that when we sit through these reports, when the community watches these reports, that they understand this is nothing that you just check off and you're going to come back and do in a year, that this is what's guiding your decisions and your implementations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. McMurro.
Just really quickly, Dr. Smith, you always talk about the importance of driving fear out of our system, and I love, I love, Dr. Collins, how you mentioned that you two, as leaders of our school district, are going to have those formative conferences with principals to just basically check in and, and look at progress and have that dialogue with them. I don't, I don't, I, I see that as its strategy, to drive fear out of our system, because it's not, it's a coaching conversation. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
So, we implemented these last year, and the, obviously, when you have a superintendent who is less than a year in, and you do something new called academic conferences, there was fear, right?
Yeah.
But the way we act in those matters the most. And so what we tried to create was an opportunity for each learning community to come, focus only on academics. We could, we have a lot of other things that our principals are responsible for, and it's important to talk about those things, but it is important to focus in on only academics. So we had this opportunity, we took four hours with each learning community, for each principal to present in front of their peers, here's what we're working on, on our campus improvement plan, for us to ask them some questions, and for the group to actually weigh in. The more we talk about these things in public practice, the better off we are as a team, and we can learn from each other. And I think that started to ease the fears. Now, am I worried always about fear in things like this? Yes. But I think the two messages that I always want our staff to hear is, one, you have a superintendent and executive leadership team who are interested in the academic improvement of our kids, and we want to model that, and we want to be involved in those conversations, and I think that's a positive thing. And then the second thing is, the way we treat staff in those conversations matters a lot. And as we continue to do this over and over and over again, I think that fear, any fear that might exist because it's new, will go away.
Yeah. Well, that is very refreshing to hear, and I, I'm wagering to bet that the principals really enjoy that open dialogue with y'all, and I'm, I'm sure that, especially since it's a peer group, I didn't know that, they're growing from their colleagues as well. So thank y'all for being innovative in that regard, and I know that FaceTime between superintendent, deputy superintendent, and principals is much valued, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees? All right, seeing none. Dr. Collins, Dr. Champion, thank you.
Thank you.
We are looking for action tonight.
Oh, thank you for reminding me of that.
Welcome.
Is there a motion to adopt our campus performance objectives?
Motion.
I have a motion for Ms. McMurro.
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Richardson. Trustees will move to vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion carries. Our campus performance objectives are adopted.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our last action item tonight. Item E is to adopt our Arlington ISD values and beliefs, and I'll turn it back to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, thank you for multiple things tonight. There's been a lot of good work that's been happening this evening, and I'm appreciative of the effort y'all are putting in. Tonight, I wanted to bring with you, to you, another draft of this for your consideration and potential adoption. You all know that we presented this to you back in August and got another piece of feedback from y'all, and so I'm bringing this forward again at this time. We've narrowed this down to a few values and beliefs, and the way I would read these statements is, the value is in bold, and the belief statement is underneath each of those. So, number one, inclusive culture. We value our diversity and believe our students and staff deserve an inclusive culture, where they feel valued, supported, and challenged to grow. The second one, strong partnerships. We believe that strong partnerships with parents and the community provide a foundation for student success. I want to come back to that one in just a minute. The third one, we believe that a thriving staff continuously learns and strives for excellence in order to positively impact our students. Maximize resources. We believe that, that district talent and financial resources must be maximized to promote student learning while also maintaining effective fiscal management. Exceptional experiences. We believe we should strive on a daily basis to create exceptional learning experiences for our students. And finally, learning environments. We believe that our learning environments must be safe, productive spaces that are well-designed and maintained. We've made a few adjustments based on your feedback the last time, and I'll tell you the one, and I, the one that I wanted to bring up is, I struggled with trying to figure out how to do this well, and it was Ms. Haynes' comment about where parents are reflected in some of this. And we talked about it, whether it needed to land under culture, or needed to land under strong partnerships, and then we even got into a little bit of a debate on whether it's parents or families. Ultimately, what we landed on was that it, it needed to be in strong partnerships, because it needed to be about a partnership with the family to support the student, to thrive in our system. It wasn't as much about the culture, and the culture piece, we were talking specifically about, on a day-to-day basis, inside our buildings, how does it feel to be a part of Arlington ISD? But the partnerships piece was where we, we ended up landing on with the parents. I would suggest, and I've been wrestling with this, I really wanted to call out parents in this one, but I almost think that we might need to switch this one to families and the community, because we do know that we have multiple family situations that our students come from, and we don't want to exclude anyone there. So we, I think that might be a tweak that I ask you to consider tonight, but I wanted to directly address your feedback on it. We, this is one that went back and forth of trying to figure out, where does this fit? Because I agree wholeheartedly, I want our parents to feel like they're a valued member of what we're doing in our system, and we felt like that it landed under strong partnerships is the best way we could articulate that.
All right. Open up for comments and questions from the trustees. Mr. Wilbanks.
Can Ms. Haynes go first?
Ms. Haynes can, can go first. That's great. Ms. Haynes?
So I, thank you. Thank you for the work, the discussion that went into adding that. As a parent in the district, it makes me extremely happy, because we, parents, families, are a huge part of the success of everything that happens in this district, so I'm very pleased with that. I love it under partnerships, and I'm also completely okay with it being families instead of parents. I think that makes 100% sense.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Mr. Wilbanks, I'm going to, you got in the wrong order here on the light, but I'm going to go back to you. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, and I, I agree with Ms. Haynes that, and thank you, Dr. Smith, because I think that's exactly where it needs to go, because parents are the, one of the most important partner that we have in the education of their students. And, and that debate about parents or families, we've got the students front and center, you know, in the culture piece. So I think between the two, we've covered the family. I mean, there's extended family, but by parents, we mean anyone involved in our students' upbringing, and, and so I think it worked out well.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Ms. McMurro?
Thank you. I agree with all of the above. I actually think families includes parents, it's just more of an inclusive term, and we know that we serve a large, a large community, and every family looks different, so I love the language change, and I'm really excited to adopt these values and beliefs.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Mike?
Yes, thank you. I, I think these values and beliefs, I mean, sums up what we are trying to do in this district. We keep our eye on the North Star goal. With regards to the families provision, I, I like the thought of families, because I automatically think of graduation, and you see all of the families out there, parents, cousins, grandparents, you name it. That just brings in the, the partnership portion. The real big thing that sticks out to me, you know, I always talk about budget, but the maximize resources is understanding that we're going to maximize these resources while maintaining effective fiscal management. I think it's important for it to be forward-facing to the community, to know that we are very, very fiscally responsible with the taxpayer monies, while ensuring that we maximize the potential of the experiences for, for the students in our district.
If I could add one thing on this, I just want to give you some insight into the debate in, in how we landed on some of these things. We almost took talent out, because we had another one in here about the thriving staff, but ended up leaving it in, because there's, there's one thing that we have been working hard on as a cabinet and, and leadership team to really identify in this, is that we have, we have genius throughout our system at various levels. It just doesn't come with a job title, it's in all parts of our organization. And if we're really good at what we do, then we're able to leverage that genius from all parts of our organization to help us be better. And so when we talk about maximizing talent, I don't want it to be perceived as a negative thing, it's actually finding ways to empower a great voice amongst our staff and multiply that voice, so that we can get the best out of our organization for the future, so that's why we ended up leaving it there.
Go to Ms. Richardson.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt these, but with the amendment under strong partnerships, that we change the word parents to families, because that does, what you said, Mr. Mike, that does look like our graduation ceremonies, when we look like, look out, and then I also think about our schools and our workrooms and our lunchrooms, and when you look out in there, those are aunts and uncles and grandparents, and sometimes it's big brothers and big sisters raising families. And I think it's so important that they see themselves in our values and our beliefs. So if, I would like to make a motion to adopt this with that amendment.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt with the provision that parents is changed to families. Is there a second for that motion?
I have a second.
I'll give that one to Mr. Mike. Just barely.
Just barely.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, then I'm seeing none, we'll move to vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion carries as amended.
Trustees, I want to thank you again on this one. I just want to point you back to, the majority of you have been through Holdsworth Center Training, School Board Institute. One of the key things that they mention in there is the clarity of the values of the district as adopted by the Board of Trustees. And so this is one of those key steps along the way that we needed to do. You had some core values in the past, but these will replace those, because they reflect the current board's point of view. So thank you for putting the effort in. I know this was a long, drawn-out process, but I'm really happy with the product that we got, and I hope you are as well.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? I'm seeing a light from Mr. Wilbanks. Mr. Wilbanks?
I'd like to pull 11K, just for some discussion with Mr. Horn and...
Mr. Wilbanks has withdrawn as consent agenda item K. We will now proceed to vote on the consent agenda as presented minus item K. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item K?
Motion.
I have a motion for Ms. Fowler. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Mike. Trustees will vote on the consent agenda minus K. Okay, the non-withdrawn portion of the consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll now move to consider item K. Mr. Wilbanks, you had discussion.
Thank you, President Chapa. And, Mr. Horn, I'm glad we've added this to our toolkit in terms of procurement methods, but it does come with a little bit of risk, and so, and there's jobs where it's best suited for, and I think this package, there's about 20 different projects in Phase V totaling $10 million. What's the largest project in terms of dollars in that basket? Do you know offhand?
Probably, at this point, probably be a young junior high school. We're estimating that to be at about $8 million or so.
Okay. And then that's mostly MPE work, some renovations?
Renovations primarily, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. So, given the risk, what, what kind of processes have we, first of all, how long have we done, been doing JOC procurement?
I couldn't tell you exactly how many years, but for many years, and we do it mostly, we use JOC or job order contracting mostly on, for maintenance projects, smaller projects that, and they, but they may be classified as renovation, but they're smaller renovation jobs. The, the noted risk or the reputation or risk with job order contracting involves districts that might have used job order contracting to actually construct schools in the past. And so there, we have safeguards in place and, and requirements for how we use JOC, and it's primarily for smaller projects, projects that are very simple, that don't require an architect necessarily, because the, the complexity's not there. It might only involve one or two trades, say, just fencing or just painting. And so we have a lot of those smaller-type projects in the backend of this bond, and job order contracting allows us to save those dollars. We're not required on small... on small projects where it's a single trade like that to hire an architect and spend those extra dollars. So, the intent would be to utilize job order contracting where we can to save that money and to make our bond dollars go farther.
Yeah. No, it's, I agree. It's, yeah, it sounds perfect for these. My only concern is, what are we, what do we do in terms of processes and controls that might be different with JOC versus CRM and the other procurement methods?
It's actually very similar. We, because we, as a district, we require certain safeguards to, and all that's through purchasing. So, we still will, will look at multiple vendors, as many as three. So, we always, we always work to try to have three vendors provide us with proposals. Those proposals have to also be a part of an interlocal, in so to speak. And we run all that through purchasing, just like we would any other project. And we look to find the best value. And oftentimes, that is, in this case, because they're all qualified, it'll be the lowest cost provider for that particular service.
Okay. Yeah, and we don't have, we don't go by schedules in terms of contracted rates and...
All of your, all of those interlocals, job order contracts through interlocals are, they're prebid and say, so they are all based on certain RS means values. And so, they have to be qualified before they can, before we can use them.
Okay. And then, do we do anything different to ensure the quality, you know, replacing the air conditioning unit that we get what we say? Is that any different with this versus the other methods and the kind of controls that we put in place to ensure?
It's all the same. We follow, we follow the same prescribed methods and so forth. So, typically with something as complex possibly as HVAC or mechanical, we'll hire an engineer for that purpose. But we don't have to hire an architect. But we still do hire consultants or engineering experts that can help to make sure that that equipment's designed properly, of course.
Well, thanks for clarifying that. I was just curious what the top dollar in on each of the projects was. And you said, wait, you said Young was $8 million?
We estimate Young, the renovations for Young will probably be close to $8 million.
And the total package is $10 million?
Well, they, we wouldn't do, we won't do Young through this process. We already have, the board's already selected a method of procurement. We've selected CMAR and CSP for the Phase Four and Five projects. We just need to make sure that we bring this to the board to allow you by state law to authorize that we could use job order contracting for certain smaller projects within Phase Four and Phase Five. So...
Yeah. And the sum of all those smaller projects equal?
Yes, sir. You're correct.
Got it. All right. So, all right, that's answered my question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Are there any other comments or questions about item K? Seeing none, we'll move to vote on item K. Is there a motion to approve item K?
So, move.
Have a motion for Mr. Wilbanks. Is there a second? I'm sorry. Ms. Fowler. Second by Ms. Fowler. Trustees will move to vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, item K passes. Next up on our agenda tonight is our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Acosta, do we have any speakers registered for non-agenda tonight?
President Chapa, we do. We have one.
Okay. We have Ms. Sayed here to speak about the TAD nomination process. Ms. Sayed, welcome back. I know you know the rules, so you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, President Chapa, Dr. Smith and trustees. I really appreciate your time and your efforts. It's a non-paying job and you guys are working like close to midnight or something. Well, you all know my name and I'm running for TAD. Well, I am the only candidate have the ARB experience. And ARB stands for appraisal review board. Well, the ARB is vital to the journey property owners experience when they discuss their protests with the appraisal district. Currently, as of July of 2024, the TAD Board of Directors appoints the members of ARB for two-year term. Well, I will bring clarity and understanding of the ARB processes to the TAD Board, helping to enhance the governance of our appraisal district. No currently serving TAD Board of Director or the potential candidate has this type of experience. Since January of 2025, I have attended all the TAD closed-door entity meetings. I attended this meeting on behalf of all those entities who casted vote for my candidacy in the prior election. That was in 2024. They include City of Colleyville, Crowley, Banbrook, Halton City, Richland Hills, Grapevine, Hasslet, Azle, White Shuttleman, Grand Prairie, Provo ISD, Arlington ISD and Everman ISD. But this year, five cities have zero votes. Eleven cities have one vote, and one school district has zero votes. Going onward, my plan is to implement the recent changes by the 89th legislative session within the property tax code, focusing on uniform and equal property appraisals, uniform and equal treatment to all taxing entities and the taxpayer. The accuracy and integrity of tax route will be my first priority. And simply, I'm asking your nomination, probably in next meeting or so. I have no idea when you guys need to schedule it, but on Tuesday, during the work session at City of Arlington, some of the council member discussed about the nomination. And they came up with the plan and they invite all the candidates for the open work session so they can ask question to all the candidates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sayed. We'll now move on to superintendents' comments. Dr. Smith.
Trustees, I'm going to, this is odd, I know, but I'm going to skip the district priorities section because you've heard a lot about our priorities this evening. And I'm going to go right into a few very quick highlights. And I know it's football season, so we're going to start my report with football. And I know that the Dallas Cowboys technically got their first win of the season on Sunday, but I actually think they got their first win a few days prior to that at Reminzy Elementary. Nine Cowboys, including Tyler Smith, Jalen Tolbert, put on a flag football camp for third and fourth graders, and maybe Ms. Richardson and I as well, part of NFL's Play 60 campaign to encourage kids to be active and healthy. Plus, they also gave the students new Cowboys-themed math workbook. Principal Salina Zuna reported that a lot of the kids called it "the best day ever." Good things keep happening at Rodriguez Junior High. Last week, students got a hands-on taste of the future when they stepped aboard a Texas Mobile STEM Lab. The traveling classroom packed with tools, technology and opportunities to explore STEM parked at Rodriguez for three days last week. Students got to learn about aeronautical engineering and even participated in a ribbon cutting for the expansion of the Mobile STEM Lab program. There's no better place to be on the first day of Hispanic Heritage Month than Wimish World Language Academy. Wimish teacher Abraham Hernandez and his mariachi band welcomed students with festive music to school Monday morning. The Wimish Wolves had a full dance party before the first bell even rang. Several of us were there and ended up in the conga line and will not be in there next year. I did note that President Chapa and Ms. Richardson got in the line and they got out a lot quicker than I did. And so, I'll work, I'm going to work on that skill next year. And while we started with football, let's finish with football this month. Representatives from the Cowboys visited the Seguin High School Multipurpose Activities Center recently to announce that Seguin senior and football defensive lineman Adrian Contreras had been named an NFL Latino youth honor award finalist for his outstanding achievements, both on the field and in the classroom. The recognition could land Adrian a big scholarships. Congratulations, Adrian. This concludes my superintendent's report for this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Are there trustees with reports or comments tonight? Okay, seeing none. I will just note, because I got a few questions about it. This is the second meeting in a row that I have worn a Arlington Colts shirt. And for those of you who know me well, know that this is, this is a thing for me because I went to Sam Houston High School. But I'm wearing this on Thursday. Just to clarify, my son Benjamin plays on the Arlington High JV football team. And because I'm missing his games, I'm there in solidarity with him and I'm wearing green. But don't worry, Sam folks, I still have some red, white and blue on my, on my lapel here.
And he won tonight.
And they did, I just got notification, they did win 22-21 over Halton High School. All right. Madam Secretary, do we have any matters reported for consideration tonight?
On our vision and beliefs, we are going to change Slide Four from a strong family parents, from parents to families is the wording that will be changed. But that is the only amendment, the only amendment that we have at this time.
Okay. All right. We've, we've addressed all items on our agenda tonight. We have no other matters to discuss in closed session. We have no further business to conduct. So, this meeting is adjourned at 9:38 PM.